Per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. School committee is using the Zoom meeting platform to conduct this meeting. LCTV is live streaming the meeting on twelve, and a recording of the meeting will be posted to the LCTV YouTube channel as possible after the meeting. As a reminder, all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. There is no pledge of allegiance, although there's the next agenda item is correspondence. Before we get that, I just want the public to know due to events that occurred at a different Zoom meeting, there will be slightly different controls and rules set up for our Zoom meeting this night to make sure that that kind of garbage does not happen here again. So just to be forewarned, it may be harder to get in than it was previously. Diane, I'm sorry, Kevin, correspondence, please.
Thanks, Ryan. The following correspondence was recorded. Emails regarding the reopening of school for all students for in-person learning from the following. Bernadette Don Irvin on January twenty ninth and January thirty first. Corinne Ashowin on January thirty first. Mike Don Irvin on February second. Deb and Pete Navatney on February fourth. An email from Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of Career Technical Education. An email from Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of Career Technical Education regarding the Walter E. Quigley, Jr. Student of the Month Award for January two thousand and twenty one. Long Meadow students recognized are Jared Fritz for graphic and visual design and Caleb Zive for machine technology three.
Thank you, Kevin. Our next agenda item is a possible approval of minutes.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the January twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty one, school committee meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes from the last meeting, from the twenty sixth? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Brown one?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion passes seven zero. Uh, next up is visitor comments. As I said before, we have more controls set up. So if you are a visitor interested in commenting, you're going to have to make yourself known through the chat or by putting on your camera and waving at me so I know that you're interested in speaking. I don't see anything in the chat, and I see no one making themselves known. So we will move on. School committee announcements and recognitions. Members, Gianna?
Thanks, Ryan. I'm just gonna look down because I'm reading it from my phone. Just wanted to celebrate and thank Center School. They're having their Helping Hands Valentine's Day food drive this week. So February eighth, ninth, eleventh, and twelfth, the drop-off location collection boxes will be located on the tree belt by the car line. What they are asking for is canned food and non-perishable items. The food drive is benefiting the Long Meadow Food Pantry and Loaves and Fish's Kitchen of Springfield. So thank you again, Center School. Great work.
We'll move on to business with guests. Update on instructional model is first.
Right. Uh, thank you. Uh, so we have our regular guest, Chief John Dearborn is with us. Uh, thank you once again for coming out, chief. Um, I just want to provide some broad context for the health and safety discussion that he will lead us in. So one second here. Numbers continue to drop lower and lower. Uh, it's very encouraging. As of today, we have twenty-nine active cases in town, so we've really fallen off rapidly. Um, I don't think we'll see a color change this week, but we could, if we can keep doing a good job, um, we could probably see ourselves drop down another color change next week. And again, I just want to express my appreciation of the community for their engagement in all the protective measures. So kind of where we're seeing the cases, it's still really, um, our long-term care cases have dropped off to, uh, basically nil. Uh, just keep in mind that those facilities in our, uh, six LE housing complexes are at least all received, uh, first round vaccinations. Um, most of them are scheduled either by the weekend or early next week, um, to, um, receive second round vaccinations. So, you know, the, and I certainly don't want to use, uh, a term I'm not a hundred percent confident with, but we'll establish herd immunity in those, um, environments. Uh, really, we're still seeing that, um, our cases are really family-based. Uh, one person gets it and it runs through families. So that still continues to be, um, an issue. Um, I believe it's, it's probably hard to avoid, um, if you want to live any type of normal life with your, um, immediate family. Just continue to caution folks, you know, um, things like playdates and, you know, some sports activities, um, just use good judgment. You know, I, I, I don't want everybody to be locked in their house twenty-four hours a day, but just use good judgment if you're engaged in different things. Um, and we'll continue to perform well and in kind of knock back this pandemic. So hope that helps. Chief, would you be here to talk a little bit about the, uh, the status of vaccinations? I know it's been a big lift for you and your team, and, uh, I know that is a question on the mind of a lot of our educators, and it's actually, uh, a, on the school committee agenda later on in this meeting. Yep. So I, uh, I guess a big lift, but a big source of stress for me also. Um, obviously, I, I, I look at the global pitch for our community, not only the schools, but all fifteen thousand four hundred residents. And so we have, um, we've embarked, uh, for the last month or so to implement a plan that's thirteen years old, uh, that is still in play, um, to build a vaccinated area community. Um, and we have a great staff. We solicit for volunteers and, uh, shout out to everybody who stepped up. We had four hundred and fifty residents volunteer to assist in our clinic. Um, we received, um, one hundred doses of vaccine, uh, late last week. And we were able to disperse that one hundred doses over the last two days. We did not waste a drop. We have another clinic scheduled for, uh, Thursday and Friday this week. We have one hundred and seventy-five in older residents scheduled for that clinic, and I promise you we will not waste a drop. And then whether I'm getting another hundred doses next week is questionable. Uh, we've ordered it, um, with no promises. Um, it would appear to me that the effort is going into these, um, max vaccination clinics that everybody saw on the news today. Um, we can do it more efficiently locally. Um, we know our community, we know who needs the vaccine, we know how to get it to them, um, but the state doesn't seem to get it. So, um, when we're going to move forward in the phases, um, you know, I had a meeting with Marty and, and some other folks the other day. I guessed that April, I, I don't think I'm even going to guess anymore. Um, I'm completely disappointed with the state in this program. Um, I just need the vaccine and I can get it out to our, our community, and they're, they're just not responsive. So, sorry to be negative about that, but I just want to be honest with everybody. It's, um, and I think everybody gets how engaged I am, uh, protecting this community. Um, and the state's just failing, so. Not sure that's what you're looking for, Marty, but. No, I, no, I think that's exactly what we needed to hear, chief. I think, um, we appreciate your candor. Uh, you know, the, 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 the question that is, that we can't answer right now is the last bullet on the slide here, and that, that is when, when we might expect school employees to be included in that, in that phase too. And, and, uh, you've said to us that that is sort of to be determined, um, you know, based on the availability of the doses that you receive from the state. And I would concur that it, it seemed to, it seemed very clear to us that you've gone to great lengths to be in a go position and that you were ready to, um, you know, vaccinate, vaccinate on a, on a significant scale for our employees and for town residents. And, uh, it's unfortunate that, um, that you were not able to, uh, move ahead with that mobilization that you prepared for. Yeah, we are actually assisting residents with registering at the other, the basically the Eastfield Mall. Um, unfortunately, the, the performance over there, um, and I, we've had people that have had good experiences, so it has not all been bad. Last week, when they increased their output there, um, something seemed to go wrong. Uh, they have now called in the National Guard to assist the private contractors running that facility. Um, so I'm, I'm hoping that things do get better. Um, but, you know, we're, basically, we want to see people get this vaccine anywhere they can get it. I mean, that's, that's number one. We want to see shots in arms. Um, so whether it comes from the town along Meadow or some other entity, it needs to be efficient and it needs to, uh, move forward, but um, I know we can do it. You know, we can easily do five hundred a day of our clinic. Um, and we could, we could really knock off a, a large number of town community. Um, right now, seventy-five in, in older, I need to have vaccine where I can do, uh, home visits. Uh, we have plans already in place for that. Uh, we need to bring people to the clinic, people that don't drive. Um, you know, I had a story from a ninety-year-old and a ninety-one-year-old husband and wife who went on Sunday to the clinic. They sat outside, the Eastfield Mall, they sat outside for four hours. Uh, had to use the restroom, went to McDonald's and said, you know what, we're gonna call the chief Monday morning and see when we get our shot in town, and that's what they're gonna have to do. Thank you so much. Yep. Guessing the committee may have some questions for you.
Anybody with any questions? Gianna? And I can't see everybody, so if you do have a question, unmute yourself and just, uh, announce it, please, so that we know.
Chief, not so much a question, just, um, as the daughter of, of, so my mom was at Eastfield today for three hours, having to stand out in the cold for a good portion of it. Um, so I just wanted to, to thank you for your efforts on behalf of Long Meadow residents because that it, it's, it's mind-boggling and, um, scary and, and all sorts of things. And then, chief, did you say, did you have four hundred and fifty people sign up as volunteers?
Yes, we did. Um, yeah, unfortunately, we had to kind of, we had a, uh, so we onboarded about two hundred. Um, we had a tremendous, uh, amount of, uh, medical professionals that were fortunately, uh, already vaccinated. And so we can put them right to work. We put them to work this week in our clinics. Um, we did some vaccinations of, um, my apologies, of, uh, additional volunteers over the last two days, uh, part of our ramp-up process. And then, um, Thursday and Friday, we're moving right to our seventy-five and older folks, so.
That's, that's amazing. So again, a testament to you and your team's efforts, but also huge thank you to all the volunteers that signed up and, you know, just thank you.
Yeah, it's one of the things that makes Long Meadow special. I mean, people really stepped up for this, so.
Thank you, Gianna. Anybody else? Kevin, I see you.
Yeah, thanks, Ryan. Um, chief, I mean, just, you know, a huge shout out to you and your team. Thank you for all that you're doing. Um, I know how hard you're working and, and we all really appreciate it. I guess I, I have a couple of comments and questions. So one, uh, I want to make sure I heard you correctly. You said that you could vaccinate up to five hundred people a day at the clinic? Did I hear you correctly on that?
Yeah, currently with our current setup, but I actually believe we could ramp up, uh, familiar Greenwood Center, the old daycare, or the currently shut-down gate daycare, uh, section where we're using for our classrooms and that. We've done some, the CDC provides flow models. We actually had what we call EDS plan, um, mercy dispensing plan. Now, actually, it's a plan that's been in place for thirteen years. Center based on that, it's flow modeled, and we could easily do that. I can grab more of that space. And, um, and I have plenty of volunteers. I could, we've been kicking around, and we haven't done the flow models for the other sections, but we could probably do a thousand a day. You know, if we could actually get the vaccine, so.
Yeah, so the reality is, right, the reality is if you had the vaccine, you could get the entire town vaccinated in less than two months.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
So that's, that's impressive, and it's great that we have that capacity. Let's hope that the vaccine gets its way here. Um, I guess the, the question that I had, I mean, it's pretty obvious your frustration, and, and I think we all feel that. I- is there anything that we can do as a committee, as an elected board, to put pressure on the state through our elected representatives? I, I mean, do you think any of that is worth it? And do you have any advice to us about how we can help you, um, make this process go more smoothly?
Yeah, I, you know, I think, um, Representative Ash and Senator Lesser are engaged in this. I think they understand the issue. I, I think they share our frustrations, um, with, with the actual supply. Um, one of the things I'm concerned about is that they will put more emphasis on these max vaccination clinics rather than supporting the local Board of Health clinics, which is, is what ours is. Um, you know, they've, there's been some discussions about where they feel those are more efficient. Um, and I completely disagree with that. So you know, I think those are discussions that need to be, uh, pushed forward. Um, I do plan on engaging them more. They've been very good, both of them, on reaching out for information. Um, but certainly, you know, let them know that, you know, we're ready to go in, you know, and I hope the community has confidence in, in my, me and my team and in, in our, in the town manager that, um, you know, you just give us the product, we'll get it done, so.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Kevin. Anybody else with a question? If you have your hand up, I can't see you, so you have to make yourself known. Okay, Marty, I don't hear anybody else.
All right. Chief, thanks so much. I mean, you're all on the way, you've been a valuable partner and provided critical information in critical time, so, uh, thanks so much. Um, and I, I, I think we, um, unless the committee would like to ask the chief to stay with us, he's a busy man with long days, I, I think we're, we should be all set. Is that okay? Right. Thanks so much. Many thanks to the school committee. I appreciate, um, Marty's partnership, as always, has been awesome. So thank you so much, and good night.
Thanks, chief.
So, uh, I want to go back to the, the first slide here, which, uh, but I sort of carefully chose an image that I think captures, um, you know, the, the progress that we have made on this question, the question of how to safely return more students for, um, for more in-person learning. The question that's guided us and, and, you know, I'm, I'm very proud of the progress that we've made on this question, and yet there is more progress to be made. We should continually explore this question. We should continually think about ways to, uh, safely return, uh, more students for more in-person learning. It's obviously a very complex, uh, question, uh, but what I'm especially proud of is the way that we have done this uh, with all stakeholders. This committee has been enormously supportive of our efforts to return students to, uh, additional in-person learning safely. Uh, we've had, uh, productive conversations with the LEA, and, you know, certainly my hope that we can continue to go in that direction. And, and there have been so many people that have been, uh, supportive and engaged and involved, uh, in this conversation, in answering this critical question. So I think, uh, you know, th- this committee has asked us to, you know, to continually make progress on this question. I, and, um, I would like to think that we have made great progress on this when I think back to where we were back in, in the, earlier in the fall. And you know, to, to sort of represent the progress that we have made, um, our, our data person, Alison Nelson, thanks for her work for helping us kind of gather some data on the, on the percentage of students that are either remote or attending for four and a half days, and the number of students that are attending, uh, two days. So you'll see that this pie chart is based on, uh, grade four students, uh, coming back, being offered in-person learning beginning February twenty-second. So our administrators were, uh, successful in developing a plan and identifying qualified staff with the additional sections that the, that the school committee allowed for to, uh, allow us to offer in-person learning four days a week to our fourth graders. So, uh, when that group comes online, we will uh, be at a, at a point where five of the thirteen grades will be at four days, uh, per week of learning, and we'll have over a thousand students, uh, having the opportunity to learn four or four and a half days per week. So we have made, uh, tremendous progress on that. Uh, and, and it all began back in the fall with the commitment to, uh, educate, uh, students at our most, uh, with our most intensive needs on a, on a regular basis. I would say it's important to note that, of course, this is dependent on us not having, uh, remote days. And, and I do feel that with the holidays behind us, that we will have an opportunity to, uh, have kind of a more, uh, consistent experience. And, and I don't anticipate the uh, sort of, uh, cross-the-district remote periods that we experienced in December and early January. I think, you know, what we have done is, is sort of been more targeted, uh, with the exception of weather-related events. And, you know, certainly, even in a, in a non-pandemic year, the, the mother nature sometimes dictates whether or not we can safely bring students in based on snowstorms, I think. So um, so I'm really proud of this. I'm proud how, um, you know, so many stakeholders have come together and how we've regularly made, um, you know, slow, um, well, not slow, but very, um, uh, specific progress. Um, but we've done it thoughtfully and we've done it safely. And so uh, I'm, I'm really pleased that we're at this point. And yet, it is important that we go back to this question and that we continually explore opportunities to make more progress. We, you know, there is, um, as I, as I said to the staff today in the voluntary meeting, you know, we know more about this virus today than we did back in March or in August or in the fall. Uh, there's, um, we understand that there might be some new, uh, CDC guidance, uh, coming out. And so there are, uh, some opportunities for us to, um, safely move forward with this question. And when I think about some of the, some of the opportunities, it's also important to acknowledge the challenges that go along with it. Um, I noted on, on both sides of the ledger here that, you know, phase two vaccination, uh, represents an opportunity and a challenge. And, and, you know, unfortunately, as, as the chief said, um, the state is moving very slowly in getting through, is moving slowly and getting through the phase two. And and so that's the phase where our educators and our staff are. And, and, you know, certainly, if we were, uh, better positioned with vaccination, it would, uh, create additional opportunities for us. Uh, but again, the opportunities that come from our new understanding of the virus, the opportunities that are associated with the, the positive trends that chief noted. Uh, I'll talk about pool testing in a minute. We are anticipating, uh, that CDC guidance, uh, new CDC guidance that will come out. And so once we get that, we will, um, we will pour through it and come to a quick understanding of what it means for us. And, you know, the opportunity that, um, is, is suggested by the fact that we have had, um, no evidence of in-school transmission. And so that, that's, that's an important, um, point that we need to continually come back to. And then certainly on the other side, we need to understand that there are still barriers to this. Uh, there are still barriers to, uh, returning students to, to get us to where we all want to be, right? We all want to have, be in a position where students are educated, uh, on a daily basis, uh, without the restrictions that, that we're dealing with. But of course, uh, lunch service remains a barrier, transportation, the, the restrictions on the number of students that can be on a school bus. Uh, we're all carefully watching, uh, the new strains of the virus, and we need to understand uh, how responsive the vaccinations will be to that, those new strains. We need to understand the spread of those new strains. So that's something we're keeping our eyes on. The other thing that is, is really important for us to acknowledge is the, um, the number of uh, close contacts that we have recently identified. And just to, uh, pull up some data for you, this is a, an excerpt of a uh, running, um, list that our nurses keep for us. And I want to, I want to note in here, the, um, this, this ninety-eight and, and eighty-four, that on the twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth of January, we, um, had more students in quarantine because they were deemed to be close contacts because of exposure than at any point in the year. So as much as we are, you know, very pleased to see the community transmission rates go down and the regional transmission rates go down, you know, we did experience a, a cluster you know, we did experience a cluster of cases where students were in school who were COVID positive. And it was they they came one on top of another and they were at our elementary schools. And so, you know, it's important to acknowledge that and to recognize that, you know, we're prepared, the contact, I wouldn't say the contact tracing works, right? We we identify the COVID positive cases. We engage with our nurses and our administrators and the board of health to do that contact tracing. And we identify the close contacts very swiftly. But understanding that it is disruptive to to families when when we have to notify them that their child is a close contact. And I'd say that we 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 don't err, we err appropriately on the side of caution. We will not err excessively because I think there is, you know, we do need to be as targeted with that close contact tracing work as possible. But it is it is disruptive and the fact is that, you know, the more students that are brought in for daily in-person learning, the more chances that there would be COVID positive students, the more chances that we would have to identify students as close contacts. So I think it's it's just important to acknowledge that as much as we're encouraged by some recent trends and as much as I'm very interested in finding opportunities for more in-person learning, I think we need to also acknowledge that, you know, this has been a challenge in recent days. And so, you know, we remain committed to exploring the opportunities. We need to find more safe ways for students to be in person with us. But we also need to have those honest conversations about what the challenges are that that we're that we regularly face. I would quickly note on pooled testing that we have made application to the state on this. Our application was accepted. We have been paired with a vendor. And so we will continue to explore that as an opportunity to identify asymptomatic cases in our schools. As we've said, pooled testing is is should not be seen as a cure-all. It is an additional mitigation strategy. What I worry about with pooled testing is the is the time lag associated with it. In other words, the time lag from when the pool is tested to when we get the results on that pool to the point where we have identified potentially a positive case in that pool. But we we want to continue to explore it and and understand how it can best be used in long-term public schools. So those are some of the ongoing opportunities and challenges. And really want to hit home with that point that, you know, we we need to continue this conversation. We shouldn't simply be content with the progress that we've made. We've made great progress, but we need to, you know, consider other opportunities to do it safely. In terms of next steps, just to give you some idea of where the, you know, where we see some opportunity for progress. We mentioned grade four, February 22nd, our grade four students have the opportunity to go four days a week. At the middle school level, we continue to identify students who would benefit from four days or more, you know, week of learning. And, you know, but with the with the understanding that there is limited additional capacity at the middle school. You know, they simply, in many cases, it might be roaming, you know, let's say the child's English class, but not in the math class, it shows some studies class. And so the middle school is certainly challenged there. To the high school's credit, they have a they've developed a very purposeful plan to bring in additional students safely at four days per week. So far, a number of students have been identified individually based on some criteria that Mr. Landers has set up. But the the senior class will soon receive an email from Mr. Landers asking them if they are interested in attending four days per week. And from there, after we do the assessment of the number of students that are interested, from there, we would begin to identify opportunities for student seniors to begin. And potentially the first seniors would begin coming into us at four days per week on March 1st. And then finally, and I don't want to underestimate this this final bullet, is ongoing review of the evolving guidelines to maintain safety and enhance the student learning experience. You know, as we we understand this virus now more, we understand transmission more, you know, what are what are some lunch protocols we can look at? What are some recess protocols? Can we can we modify bell schedules to bring in additional in-person learning time? So within the within the guidelines and agreements and understandings that we have, you know, how can we enrich the student experience? And so that's the that's the task that will continue to carry us forward. And so, you know, we want to stay on this 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 upward trajectory. We want to continue to engage all stakeholders. We want to continue to manage this conversation very, very thoughtfully and and based on the latest and greatest information that we have. And that's our obligation and we're committed to that. So that gives you some idea of where things stand. And finally, just a quick note, I know this is of interest to some committee members, just kind of an understanding of where we are in terms of the percentage of cohort C students. So we are still saying, you know, a percentage of families that have chosen to have their students continue to work out of cohort C. And our goal ultimately, ultimately, our goal is to expand, continue to expand that orange slice of that pie essentially, but but to do it, to do it safely. And we're it's it's complex work. It's challenging work, but it is work that we remain committed to. And I know it's work that the committee has asked us to to continue with. So gives you a little snapshot. I hope a helpful update on where things stand with the with the current instructional model. Happy to answer any questions you might have or track down any additional information for upcoming meetings if you need it.
Thank you. Any questions? Suzie, you have one?
Thank you, Dr. O'Shea. I appreciate that. I think that was a helpful backdrop. And I think all of the data there is really important context. I want to also, you know, echo your sentiments. I think our administration has done an amazing job of staying attentive to this, knowing the challenges that they face, knowing that they want students in person as well. And I think when you consider the, you know, some of the scenarios out there in our own state and other states where, you know, kids are just going back to school for the first time and in, you know, almost a year's time, we certainly have been doing well and but there's obviously more we can do. And I, as you know, at the last meeting, I asked about, you know, relative to the budget, but now relative to where we where we currently stand, if there's a possibility that we could start to look at. And I'm referencing the slide that was next steps. I think it's slide eight in your deck. You know, that ongoing review of evolving guidelines and as well as existing guidelines. And what I asked about at the last meeting was any opportunity that we might have as a district to sort of sketch out and look into and investigate the ability to maybe go within that those existing guidelines from Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that say a three to six foot threshold is is in their minds deemed safe. Again, that's that's one threshold that's been provided to us by Mass Desi and wondered if there's some plans to sort of investigate and explore the feasibility of that within our schools.
For sure, that that work has occurred, you know, frankly, we did engage in sort of looking at the different distance thresholds back in the fall. And I think in response to the discussion we had at our last meeting, our administrators have re-engaged with that to understand, you know, what the what the extent to which we would be able to bring in additional students if a distant different distant standard were adopted. And certainly that's something that we would need to proceed with thoughtfully and with the, you know, direction of the school committee and engaging our partners in the LEA. And and also I am interested to see what the the new CDC guidelines bring forward. I think that's that's going to, you know, be something that we're unaccustomed to see the CDC's position on it. Frankly, one of the one of the challenging disconnects has been the the Desi language that you noted versus the the close contact threshold that is is really widely adhered to. So I think I'm, you know, we do need to be responsive to changing trends, changing guidelines. And and, you know, that's the work we're committed to. So so the short answer to your question is yes, that that work is is happening. But we understand that it really needs to proceed thoughtfully.
I have a follow-up if I could.
Go ahead. And then I think Brown one was going to be next.
Okay. Yeah. And I I failed to mention in my first remarks, and I think it's I think it's important. You know, the data that you highlighted with regard to the close contacts certainly is concerning. And, you know, I think our chair mentions it at every meeting. But I think it bears, you know, mentioning again that, you know, we're we're all committed to getting as many children back in school as possible. And we have to do that, all of us as a community together. So we really have to follow the the procedures and steps that the that the school district and the and the emergency management have under Chief Dearborn have established for us and make sure that we're not sending sick kids to school. I mean, that's what it boils down to. So if we can, you know, ensure that that we can adhere to that, we can hopefully cut down on those close contacts. As but my next question goes to, have you, I've heard of maybe some other districts in the state have moved to that smaller distance, I believe. I don't know exactly the districts, but I know some are moving to. And I know Massachusetts has been pretty steadily like, you know, claiming six feet is the threshold. But I and again, I've mentioned it numerous times that Connecticut, I believe, has gone to like a four foot, you know, somewhere between a four and six foot threshold. So just wondering where there's been success with that? And do we know anything more about that with other districts?
I think, yeah. So I appreciate you noting the importance of of all of us as a community, both both our educators, our staff and our families adhering to the to the safety protocols and doing that that certification before anybody enters the building. So thank you for that. And I would say that, yes, we are aware of districts that that are beginning to move in this direction. There is, in fact, there was an email that went out on the superintendent's was served just yesterday, I believe it was, where they were collecting some agreements or approaches that communities are using if they're adopting some other standard. And and I'd say it's it is a it's a trickle right now. But we definitely want to learn from whatever, you know, experiences are out there, whatever districts are doing. So and and, you know, comparable, you know, comparable communities, comparably sized, comparable number of buildings, et cetera, et cetera. Those are always helpful that we get.
Thank you. I have others, but I'll wait.
Brown one, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Marty, I was just curious. I know the admin at the middle schools and high school are looking at different things. Are you guys planning on having or putting together a plan just so we have it? So that if and when we do get to a situation where we can go full in, we're kind of ready and just so we have some updates on that? I don't want to wait and then all of a sudden it's like, oh, it's going to work. And then we have to wait a couple of weeks for the planning phase.
Yeah. So the answer is yes. The I completely agree with you that we want to plan forward, that we don't want to, you know, when when we do hit a point where there is a, you know, a shared understanding among stakeholders that when we hit that point, that we we want to be in a go position. And so that the planning, I think we're always probably about four weeks ahead of, you know, the plans that are that are ultimately implemented, even with the, you know, with the fourth grade coming online on the 22nd. I mean, that that was planning that, you know, as the committee knows and encouraged us to do, that was planning that we were engaged in back in December even. So so, yes, the, you know, we want to be in a go position when the time is right, when conditions allow and when we when we have the shared understanding. So it is so important that we do that.
Okay, if you could just keep us updated on that stuff, like how many students could fit at whatever, four feet, five feet, things like that, as the admin is doing that, that would be super helpful.
I think we I think we could be in a position to do that easily at your next meeting, Brown one, if that if that's something the committee would like to see.
And if they if they have time and if that's possible, that would be super helpful.
Yeah.
One follow-up I just had about, for the high school, it says 33 students accepted a four-day week per offer. Is that since September?
That is since we had begun to identify students. I think it probably goes back to Mr. Landers is on the call, but it might go back to December or so or November. And, you know, there have been, as you see, you know, quite a few families are still declining. The number the number that have not responded is probably greater. And then this week, what what's not noted here, Brown, was that that this week we will have, Mr. Landers will have an additional group of students that will be offered the four-day-a-week experience, essentially based on the criteria relating to their engagement, their attendance, their their overall wellness and well-being, and then, of course, achievement. So that work is happening this week. And then that will put us in a position to get the message off to the senior class to engage that group as best we can with four-day-per-week learning.
How many people will be able to offer that to the initial seniors for the four days?
It 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 will depend on, is Mr. Landers on the call? I think it'll depend on the classes that, you know, so let's say, you know, 75 seniors indicate an interest in a coming four days a week. Then it would be a matter of looking at the space and their schedules to see if we can accommodate them.
Okay, I misunderstood. So you're going to invite all of them and then see?
Yeah, and Mr. Landers can clarify, but I believe all seniors will get the notice.
Got it.
And we'll go from there. And so that's sort of the the next wave. And then we would proceed from there.
And they might be able to start March 1st. That would be great.
As early as March 1st, we expect to see some some seniors. And it really, we, you know, Mr. Landers has made personal appeals to to this to the cohort C group that to come back for for even two days a week if it if it's not a health and safety concern or some, you know. And we would like to see them back. They they only have a few more months with us. And we want to give them that experience. We want to start to build that that sense of community back up and have them end on a high note.
Okay, I'm really excited. I thought I didn't I misunderstood the seniors. I think that's super exciting for them and hopefully a good number of them will accept it.
I agree.
Thanks.
Thanks, Brown one. And just I'm going to quick follow up before I call on Jamie. I know he is. Thanks, Bronwyn. And just, I'm going to quick follow-up before I call on Jamie. I know he has a question. That 33 is out of 43, those two, first two bullets go together?
They?
Accepted and 10 declined or didn't respond? Or is that a 33 out of a different number?
I'm going to ask Mr. Landers if he can jump in here. We can unmute him. Let's see.
Oh, I have to go unmute him. Give me a second.
Let's see. Oh, there he is.
Do you have it?
Tom, is there any additional information you could share with regard to the bullets that are projected here?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So I was trying to, I would like to answer and add some info to a couple of things you said. I think that number on the ground as of today is up to 35. And 28, 27 or 28 of those students were added in the last week. We did have seven or eight students at-risk students who we had invited back in, in December, who had joined us. So that's the first thing. And the second question was?
My, my question was that number 33 is out of how many? Is it 33 out of 43?
We invited, we invited another, we've invited 45 students to go, and we're up to 35 of them have said yes, no.
Thank you. That's what I needed to clarify. Bronwyn, you were asking about how many seniors and when they might get invited?
And I'm happy to answer that as well, Bronwyn.
Um, Marty said that you were, you guys were inviting back all the seniors, which I, I was, I was not clear on, but excited about.
Right. So we, we will be contacting all seniors in cohorts A and B. As you know, you've, you've been watching our, our, our image, our outreach to try to get cohort C to come back. And in order to guarantee that there's room, we had to give them that opportunity, that two-week opportunity after we came back in January. But, so we, we'll be reaching out right now. We're, we're reaching out to cohort A and B students who we want to invite based on some criteria that Superintendent explained, grades, overall success. It's not all about grades, but we're taking the D and the F list into account, taking attendance into account, overall wellness, I think Marty, Marty said, mental health issues. Those are all, you know, realities we're dealing with. So we anticipate tomorrow to meet, we could identify as many as 20 to 25 more students tomorrow and invite them in. And then after that, the next phase would be direct outreach to the seniors. We think that they've lost the most here. They have the least amount of time with us. And when we return them, the fact that they're mobile and that they can drive and that we're already existing within an open campus pilot program for, for our 11th and 12th graders this year, they can give us the most creativity to get the most back. So we can't, we can't fit every single senior though. I want to be upfront about that. The thought is not every single senior is going to want to return to four days. I know that-
Some will stay in cohort C, I'm sure.
Right. But cohort C, remember, we're going to, we're focusing on A and B. The kids already have chosen to come back. We want to give them now this next opportunity to, to come on in in four days. And we, we hope that, I mean, the best answer would be, we hope to be able to give a space to everyone who wants one. I do want to be transparent that if every single senior in cohort A and B said they want to come back, we couldn't do that. But we're hoping that it'll meet, it'll meet in the middle and we can, we can satisfy every senior. That would be our, that's our goal.
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just one last follow-up, Tom. That's can't, can't do it at six feet. Possibly more at, at a smaller distance, correct?
That's, that, that's at six feet, Ryan. That's within the exact parameters that we're living in right now. Yep. And, 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 and again, in the, in the spirit of transparency, I think, I think we can do this because, quite frankly, the seniors are not looking to stay at lunch. And, but we have to legally give them an option to stay during their two days. I, I may have to update you or come back to Marty and, and say that as, as we work that out, because that's the most challenging thing. But as long as they don't want to stay for lunch, I think we could probably get every single, I'm hopeful we can get every single senior who wants to come back, to come on back four days a week. And then this is until April 9th. And then we'll all together see what quarter four brings and, and inoculations. And it would be great if we were in a very different place by mid-April.
Great. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Jamie, Jamie, you got a question?
Yep, I did. Thank you. Thanks, Ryan. And, and I guess my precursor to what I'm going to say here is everything that's been done, what you're doing at the high school, that's fantastic. I mean, that's what we should be doing. And the fact that you're getting a lot of encouraging results is, is wonderful. The only thing I want to bring up, because I completely agree with what Bronwyn and what Suzie are saying and kind of direction they're going. The one place where I disagree, it's kind of the same, you know, conceptually, what I've been saying since, since the beginning of this pandemic. If we're going to do this, and, you know, we agree as a committee of the direction we're trying to prepare for and not knowing all of the, you know, variables that are out there, we should be preparing for three feet. You know, put a date in the sand. If that date moves, it's not going to be anything different than what we've been doing all year, moving dates around and, and changing things around. You know, so if it's March 15th, let's say, hey, we're going to three feet, assuming that the CDC is going to make a change. To not prepare for that would, would be, I don't think, right. It wouldn't be following what Chief Dearborn's doing. It's exactly what Kevin, Kevin just asked him, that if he got 1,000 vaccines, he could get all of us vaccinated. But he's fully prepared for that opportunity. I feel like we're kind of talking around, if we have the opportunity where this CDC completely changes the guidance on us, the three feet, which, which we all think may be a possibility, let's plan. Let's say March 15th, let's say April 1st, that our plan is, you know, what can we do with kids if we're able to go down to three feet? And what does it look like? How many students can we get in the schools? Because as much as I love this, we're leaving out fifth graders, which I think is personally an issue, sixth graders, seventh graders, eighth graders. And we're kind of leaving, leaving those students behind. So, you know, instead of losing another three or four weeks because we didn't prepare for three feet, when we know that it's probably coming, none of us know, because we're not making that decision. But to not prepare for that, I think, isn't doing our job. So, you know, I, I really want to kind of put a date out there and start planning towards that date versus the very open, it feels like willy-nilly to me. That's, that's just not how you're going to get anything done. Pick a date. I don't care what the date is. And I completely agree with what everybody is doing. I love what Principal Landers is doing and kind of us overall. But it always makes me nervous when we don't have a date and we don't have a target, even though that target may move. So don't worry about the target moving. Think about how many dates we changed on people this year. I mean, it feels like the dates are constantly moving. So I'm, I'm not as much worried about that. But if we, if we don't put something out there, no one's ever going to take it seriously. So that was my couple, my two cents.
Thank you. I would, I would point out that asking about the upcoming plans without the, the part about picking a date, I think Bronwyn and Suzie were actually saying the same thing. They just didn't, they just didn't ask specifically for the date. I think that's the part where your comment is a little bit different. Does anybody else have a question? Or Marty, do you have a response to that? Or?
I don't know. I, I would just want to reassure the committee again that, you know, the, the, the eventuality planning, describing, Jamie, that, that is happening. But again, it, it, you know, we, we just need to be sure that we're thoughtfully engaged in getting direction from the committee on that and responding to the new guidelines that, that may come out. And so, but that, that work is, I can assure you that we, we are doing the, the pressure testing and that, that would be necessary.
So the one thing I would say is, you know, in, in response to that, completely agree. There's probably a lot of things going on behind the scenes I'm not aware of. But let's do the work where we've got to ask the public, you know, is everyone going to send their, you know, students if it goes down to three feet and they're able to send their child four days a week? And that's the new CDC guidance? Are you going to send your kid? We've got to get all that information back. I just don't want to be, and I think Bronwyn said this, or Suzie, it was great points. I just don't want to get caught. And, you know, I know without a date, you know, we'll get caught. And I don't want to lose another week, two weeks, or even a day for some of these students. Because I think for some of the fifth and sixth, seventh and eighth graders, you know, it's getting to be, you know, a lot. And they need, you know, a lot more than, than what they're giving and, you know, getting, getting everything situated. So.
Thank you. Just to, to, before I call on whoever's next, to chime in, I want Jamie saying, maybe we need a, a date, Marty, where the admin can give us the plan. So rather than say, Jamie, this is the date kids are going to go in, we're going to pick a date where we know plans are there. So guidelines change, vaccinations happen, that kind of stuff makes it more available. We know that everybody is ready to act. I think that's really important. I think that was Bronwyn's point, was to make sure we don't get this information, then make a plan, then get to act. Let's be ready. So I think those are valuable points by everybody.
Can I, can I add one thing to that, Ryan? I, I completely agree with kind of your thought process on it. I'm just, you know, there, there's, there's actionable dates. And if you, you know, and I completely agree with what you're saying, get everything done. But then there's always going to be this timeframe to get everybody more comfortable with it. I think you got to put a, put a date out there. I really do. I, I think whether, call it March 15th, call it April, make up whatever date it is. I, I really don't care about that part of it. It's just if you don't put something out there to work towards and feel good and confident about, and get everybody more comfortable with that transition, no different than what happened in the beginning where we transitioned, you know, from, you know, fully remote to hybrid, you know, and then we made the decision at Christmas time to, you know, go another week remote. All great decisions, but we gave dates and we were kind of out front on it. I, I just think it's only fair to be out front on it for parent planning, for teacher planning, for kid planning, you know, for everything else that goes along with this, you know, if we aren't being, you know, forthright about what it looks like and what we're planning towards, you know, with a caveat that, you know, if the CDC keeps the six-feet guidance, we might have an issue and we may have to change again. But thinking through it, kind of going, hey, we think it may change. We're going to be prepared. Here's what we're preparing for, that on March 15th, if they change it to three feet, we're starting on, you know, the following Monday. Or I'm just making up things. But whatever that ends up being and whatever the group can agree on, I think would be very valuable for the group and the community.
Yeah. On that topic, maybe we can discuss, Marty, having the admin team come back and give us that information. Because on the points Jamie's making, when we picked dates, it was based on information from the admin team letting us know when they could get things done and implement them by. So maybe we can get a report next time would be, uh?
Yeah. And like I said, yeah, the, the planning is, again, just to want to assure the committee and, and the community that the, the forethought and the foreplanning is there and it's ongoing. I mean, I'd like to think we're often, you know, weeks ahead of, of the, the conversation. We are looking around the bend, that pressure testing that is necessary is ongoing. We would be able to implement a plan. But again, I, I think we need to make sure that we are bringing everybody along for the ride on this conversation. And I agree, we need to understand what the, you know, what the interests and thoughts of the community are. I think the idea of understanding, you know, whether parents would send their children at a different distance standard is important. But we, we just need to bring everybody along on that conversation and do it thoughtfully and continue to make progress. And, and, you know, that we, we will be in a go position. I can assure you, we'll be in a go position when, when we've reached those shared understandings. And when we get the direction from the committee, I mean, we'll, we'll be ready to go.
Thank you. I see your hand, Bronwyn. I want to make sure the people who haven't asked a question yet, don't have one. I don't know if Kevin, Gianna, or Nicole have a question? Gianna, go ahead.
Yeah. I was going to ask about the data. So Bronwyn, Bronwyn, is it okay if I ask about the data before your question?
You're up, Gianna. Go ahead.
Okay. Thanks, Ryan. Superintendent, can you bring up the slide with the, it's talking about the quarantine, the number of quarantining? So because the numbers are so important, obviously, and, and the trending, you know, a slide before this is talking about there's no in-school transmission. And so I just want to be sure I understand what's going on here. Like where it says total active cases, is that of school-age children?
Yeah, thanks. That's school-aged children, yes.
So, so that number is going up, but then the quarantine number is going down?
Yeah, we, we saw, we saw that number, the, the total number of active cases, that's, it's trending up slightly. But again, more children in school, you're going to have more active cases. I, I, I think it has leveled off. And I think we're going to start to see that number fall off, the number of total active cases. And you can also see that the, the total number of, of, of children in quarantine for exposure as close contacts, that's starting to fall off again. But, you know, is what we've seen mostly throughout the year is in the 30s. But to be in the, in the 90s and 40s, I, I just need to really emphasize just how disruptive it is to families when they get that notification that their child was a close contact. We can't underestimate that because it, you know, especially when we're, you know, like K4, where we're all in and we have a, a remote C teacher, you know, those, those children who are experiencing quarantine, it's, it's difficult to access learning in some cases. So my, my goal is to limit the number of total active cases and encourage parents to do that screening that we talked about and, and, you know, be precise with our contact tracing, so as to limit the number of students who are identified as close contacts.
Okay. So no in-school transmission, but the close contact is the disruption?
Yeah. I think it's when we send those notices home saying, you know, in, in, in most cases, it's not an entire class. In most cases, it's, 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 there's more precision to our ability to identify close contacts. But there's so many factors that go into that, and it has to do with the, you know, with the, with the duration of time that the child was in a class, or the movement of the child in that class, the age of the child. There's, there's a, there's a lot of factors. We work really closely with the Board of Health and our administrators and nurses to identify those, those contact situations.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent.
Yeah.
Thank you. Kevin or Nicole, do you have a question?
I do.
Go ahead, Nicole.
It's not so much a question. I just wanted to respond to some of the things that have been said so far tonight. So first, I want to say thank you again. I think one of the strong points that our community has shown over the last several months has been a willingness to not get locked into one model, but to continue moving forward and reassessing and always figuring out where we can do more, what we can do. And I appreciate all the work and energy that our administrators and faculty and staff have put into making that possible for us. To that end, I would love to see a date where we present some information about what it could look like when in the future we are able to move to a new standard. However, currently, the standard from the CDC is still six feet for social distancing. And that standard is for all of the community and schools additionally. We've seen, you, you mentioned recently in your last comment, Dr. O'Shea, that your work, of course, is to limit close contacts. We don't want to see the number of students who are having to quarantine go up. And we've seen in studies now that when community spread is low, in-school transmission is also low. And so we want to continue making decisions that facilitate that. We also know that the decisions that we make in our community don't just impact our community. We have staff and students who live in other communities as well. So I really think that our decision to move from the six-foot model hinges very strongly on vaccinations. And we heard from Chief Dearborn earlier that that is currently a point of issue with the state. We, of course, have conversation coming up later about letters and contact, about reaching out to the governor, um, prioritizing educators and prioritizing school staff. We want our schools to be able to bring back as many students as possible, as soon as possible. But that information is very dependent on vaccinations, um, for our community as a whole. Um, not even just our educators, to know that our community has achieved a certain vaccination level means that we are going to be a community that is seeing a lower spread of infection. Which puts us at the ability to then move to a new position. So I think before we talk about a hard and fast date where we would maybe move to a three-foot model or a four-foot model or any other model, um, I would rather see that we get a date from the governor about when we will actually be able to expect vaccinations widespread within our community. And for now, I'd like to see us move forward with continuing to plan for that eventuality and finding out what date we can hear what those plans are. So we know that we are, as we have been all year, ready to pivot when we are actually ready to make that move.
Thank you, Nicole. Kevin, did you have a question or a statement?
Yeah, thank you, Ryan. Um, this has been a great discussion. Uh, again, one of the things that is so impressive about this committee is having these difficult discussions, uh, with everybody being honest about what they're thinking, which I think is spectacular. So just a couple of things, I agree with the, uh, the idea that we need to understand what the plans are. We've heard from, uh, from parents in the community trying to understand what next steps will look like. And, and I think it's imperative that, you know, they understand what, what our thinking is and, um, you know, what is it gonna look like post-vaccination? Are our kids gonna come in five days a week? What are Wednesdays gonna look like? Um, you know, all of the things that the, that we're getting, that we're seeing when parents send us emails. Uh, I, I really want us to be responsive to that because I think those are really important questions that everybody's thinking about. Um, I also think we have an amazing opportunity to learn what's going on from our neighbors in Connecticut. It's still amazing to me that my nieces are going five days a week in Suffolk at three-foot distancing. Um, we have a ton that we can learn from them. If that's working well there, I don't know why it won't work well here. Um, I do think one thing that we haven't talked about, and I think is really important, and, and Marty, you sort of hinted at this in your, your contact tracing. Um, when close contacts are teachers, it puts a massive strain on our ability to do what we need to do in person. So I think it's important for everybody to remember. If you get more kids in the building and you get teachers getting knocked out because they're close contacts, we're gonna have a hard time to staff what we're trying to do. And so again, to me, that makes it even more important that we get vaccination, um, so that that becomes a non-issue for our teachers. Uh, and I think the, the final thing, I, I want to direct this to, to Tom. Uh, Tom, do you have any advice for parents who want their kids to go four days a week? And those seniors have no interest in going four days a week? Do you have an incentive program? I, I, my guess is that there are gonna be way more parents who want their seniors to go four days a week than seniors who actually want to go in school four days a week. Just speaking from my personal experience, and that's, that is a joking question, Tom. You don't have to answer that. It's gonna involve likely lots of Starbucks gift cards coming, you know, anyway, so.
We, we, we hope they come back and rejoin the community. I mean, for the sake of, for the sake of a little bit more normalcy, obviously, it's not completely normal, but and if, and if some don't want to come back, we'll respect it, but we want to make room and, uh, more human contact safely done, the better.
Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, Tom. Uh, I know Bronwyn, you had your hand up a little bit ago. Do you still have a question?
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna try and see if we could, um, just based on what everyone's saying. Um, we have talked about, um, looking or diving in and trying to get some information from the schools in Connecticut for a few months now. I don't know if we actually still need to do that, or if maybe we can do like a combination of what people have been talking about. And Marty said earlier, he thinks the admin would be able to bring a full plan back to our next meeting, which is the twenty-third. So, um.
Let me, let me clarify. We can show you what, um.
What it would look like.
What a less than six-foot standard would look like. I think frankly, we, we would need, you know, that the, the date that we do that, if that's something, you know, again, if, if that's, if that is, we can be in a go position.
Okay.
For whenever the committee deems it to be appropriate.
I think there's nothing wrong with, um, having the plan. Um, and I know Jamie wants to set a date tonight for the, for people to start. Um, which I think, uh, is very exciting. I don't, we don't want to get too, too far ahead, but that would be the next step after the plan gets presented. If we're in a position to do that, which hopefully we will be. So if the middle schools and high schools could present, um, their plan on the twenty-third and then we could, um, discuss it then, I think that would be helpful, but at least everything would be in place. And whether we end up using it two weeks after that, or a week after that, or a month after that, we don't really know. But I think having it is essential. Um, showing it to the community so they know what it looks like would be helpful. Pretty much just like the K to two presentations were in the three and four. I guess the only thing that they might not be able to bring forward with them when they present is an exact date. But maybe at that meeting, we could discuss one.
Yeah, I agree with you. And I think seeing the, seeing the plan has to be the next step and then we can talk about dates and whatever else might have to happen. Thank you. Jamie, I believe you had a question?
Yeah, I did. I, I completely.
You'll be next?
Yep. What you just said, Ryan, I completely agree with. I mean, obviously, you know, the, the, you know, group is gonna go back, you know, look at it, you know, figure out what makes sense, what doesn't make sense and come back to us with a date, you know, I, I'm not hell-bent on doing a date tonight. I just say that it's an important part of this process. Um, the only other thing I would say to this, and I just really caution the overall group, because if we are gonna change that, we should be having a very, uh, we, we, you know, a very open conversation about whether we're gonna change, you know, what we're following as a group. Uh, all year, we've been making decisions based off of CDC guidance between three and six feet. We use the very conservative six feet. No, none of us wanted to touch three feet with a ten-foot pole. I didn't want to either. I didn't think it made any sense. But I, I'm starting to hear vaccine on, on everything, which I think is a wonderful thing. I hope everybody's vaccinated tomorrow. But that has not been part of our decision-making. We've been following the CDC on this as to what the guidance is with regards to that. Um, so, you know, the only thing I would caution is that's what we've been talking about all year. So we're nine months into making decisions based off of the CDC in the, what, what I would call quote-unquote science as to what they're providing for us and guidance from, from the federal government, um, as well as the, you know, state and local governments. Um, adding that the, you know, the, you know, you know, being able to go out and say everyone's gonna get a shot, you know, as part of that, um, that's changing what we're, what we've been doing. Um, I'm not saying I disagree with it. I'm just saying that is not what we've been talking about all year long, and that's not how we've been making the decisions. And I don't think we've ever said that, you know, hey, we won't be back a hundred percent in school unless everybody has a vac- vaccination. So, you know, I want to just be clear because it kind of, I, I think about it too, and I, I kind of go, yeah, that would be awesome. You know, why couldn't chief get everybody in here? But that has never been the, the basis for our decision-making. So, you know, if we're gonna start changing basis for decision-making, I think we should at least have that discussion so everybody knows. You know, that, you know, if it's a vaccine, obviously that goes into next year too. So we really got to think through what we're using to make, make these decisions to the best of our ability. Uh, because I think it has consequences going into next year and it might be unintended consequences that, you know, result.
Thank you, Jamie. One thing I would point out that I, I don't believe I've been making decisions just based on CDC. I think we, I, I can speak on for myself, listening to the chief when he comes to our meetings has been incredibly helpful. We had Beverly at some of our earlier meetings, so we had the health department. And then we have also our own reading and research and information searching that we've done ourselves. So I don't think we've just done the CDC, but I hear the point you're making about, you know, the laying guidelines. I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, that's what, and, and I didn't, I didn't, I, I, I said it in that way, but what I meant, we, we're using all these variables and the variable that we keep bringing up, which is like this awesome thing. We all were hoping it would get here sooner than later. We're starting to factor that in and make decisions based on that. Um, and we have not been talking about that and kind of informing the public that, hey, we're not sending everybody back until everybody's vaccinated. Um, you know, that we gotta make sure we're at least communicating that because I think that would be a big change to the community. Um, the expectation, uh, the, of the community would be probably very different, depending on which community you talk to. Uh, but that's, I, I completely hear what you're saying, Kev, or not Kev, but, uh, Ryan. But, uh, you know, that was the big basis was the CDC and we never really said vaccines were that was the end-all be-all. We're not gonna be making any decisions until we have all that done. So that was my point. Yep.
Fair point, but vaccines are relatively recent change. They haven't been here. Uh, Suzie, I believe you're next.
Yes, thank you. And, um, on that note, I think, again, if I can, um, emphasize a point that Kevin made, which is that, you know, our neighbors to the south have been able to, many of them have been able to successfully stay in school with their students at, uh, you know, within a three to six-foot distance without the vaccine. So I think that, um, that learning lessons from those, um, districts is really critical to any, you know, next move we make, because then that effectively takes the vaccine out of the equation. Um, you know, really because it's not available to us right now. But, um, certain, we're, we're asking the district to make plans, um, moving forward. I have just two points and it's really just, um, i- ideas, not, um, necessarily like, you know, it's, it's my ideas that popped in to my head and I know, uh, other people have been probably discussing them. But, you know, we're talking about safely returning students four days a week. Um, there is a day that, you know, we're not utilizing necessarily for in-person learning and it's Wednesdays. So, um, I think any plan that comes forward, I'd love to have, um, the, the admin team consider what Wednesdays could look like moving forward. Um, if there's a potential change to what they look like currently, um, if, if it means, uh, more students could come back to school in person. And then, uh, secondly, I think the, um, conversations around lunch, um, you know, I, I'm hopeful that, you know, well, not, not like today, but as we move to the spring, um, and as we, you know, maybe look to have a, a date, uh, set in the future, not so distant future where we can, um, target returning students, that lunch, um, you know, could be mitigated and, and other situations could be mitigated by, um, potentially setting up some really, um, you know, high-quality, uh, outdoor tents um, that can be used for lunch periods and, and other, um, scenarios to, um, again, reduce the space, um, in, between students. And I, I, I would urge the, um, team to look into that, especially given the fact that, you know, at one of our recent meetings, we, we were able to reallocate, you know, current year's funding for, you know, a number of computers. And there was also mentioned that there would be other, um, opportunities for, uh, funding to be reallocated this school year. So I would think that, you know, our, our priorities should be around how we can safely return more students for in-person learning. And I think investment in those outdoor, um, tents would be, uh, pretty significant in, um, supporting that goal.
Thank you, Suzie. Great question. I believe I just heard Suzie suggest that Jamie and Tom Mazza bring that up at our next finance subcommittee? Maybe a, a topic.
Good.
Get into. I think that's what she said. Anybody else with another question? On our first topic tonight? You have to make yourself know because I can only see like four boxes right now. So if anyone else has a question, oh, now I can see everybody. Hang on. Awesome. So no questions? Is that correct? All right. The next thing on our agenda.
Right. Can we just wrap that up to make sure we're on the same page for the?
I think we heard multiple times in agreement that we would like to hear from the administration on what that plan would like. And I think the last point Suzie just made is if you could also include what Wednesday, adding Wednesday would look like. And that, uh, we're talking at smaller feet, whether it's four or three. I guess the point is, what is the largest distance that you can get the most, if not all kids back in? Because that would be the safest version. At four feet, I, I would say some buildings, um, are more capable of this than others. I recall our tours of the middle schools, which is one of the reasons why we want new middle schools. If you all recall, a middle school science room, um, uh, four feet doesn't exist in that place, um, the way those desks are. So whatever they can do, whatever the, uh, maximum distance to get the maximum number of kids, I think that's what we would love to hear.
Great, thanks.
I agree, Bronwyn. Marty, any last words on that one, or do we move on to the next?
No, well, uh, that, that, all that, all of you described has been ongoing. Um, it's been, it's been a regular part of our admin discussion. We'll be, we'll be ready to go.
Great. So the next thing on our agenda is the Educational Opportunities booklet for Long Middle High School Curriculum Subcommittee, view the changes to the LHS Educational Opportunities booklet, including the elimination of some courses and the addition of a new course, contemporary issues in a diverse America. And they are recommended the changes as presented. Who is going to talk about that one?
So, uh, we'll turn it over to Mr. Landers, uh, part of the annual updates, the Educational Opportunities book and, and the, uh, these, uh, changes were, uh, reviewed by the Curriculum Subcommittee and, uh, recommended to the, to, for approval to the full committee. Uh, so I think it's, uh, uh, how can we be most helpful to the committee? What would you like, how would you like Mr. Landers to approach this? And would you like him to give you an overview of the changes?
Uh, I would, speaking for myself, I would appreciate that. Anybody else? Thumbs up if you want an overview. Save more thumbs, Mr. Landers. We love having you here.
Thank you. Thank you. So, good evening, everyone. Uh, so each year we look at our educational opportunities offerings to make sure that our verbiage, our descriptions are currently represent the courses we, uh, as they are and, and that they're clear to students and families. Um, we met with curriculum sub, as Marty said, and we had good discussion. And we're here to ask for the full committee's support and, and approval. This year's proposals, um, there, there are two parts in your documents. You see some proposed changes, adjustments to existing courses. And then some, uh, second section, new courses or courses no longer running. Um, let me chat a, a, a little bit about those. Um, after I say that this year's proposals are in line with, with district and school goals. Um, among other things, we're looking to continue to embed, um, and focus on skills and competencies in our vision of the graduate and our castle competencies. Um, please continue to increase the personalization of, for students. They continue to have emphasis on inclusivity, democracy and anti-racism. So, um, those threads, um, are part of, of, you know, the verbiage changes, the updates and and the new offering that we bring forward to you tonight. Um, as an example of some of the changes, and I'll talk a little bit about the new course, but as, as an example of some, some of the changes, we have some updated and explicit language in both the English Department and Social Studies Department, just being explicit and acknowledging the importance of, uh, including historically marginalized voices and peoples. Um, we heard last year when chatting with our students that, um, sometimes even though they were reading student authors of color and, and reading books, sometimes students weren't aware of that. So there's an emphasis on being explicit. There's an emphasis on being very purposeful about that. So that's what the language that you see in your packets represent in, in the English and the Social Studies, um, section of the book that runs through all courses. And then if you look at the proposed new course and the course is no longer running, I'll, uh, I'll kind of go in reverse. The course is no longer running. Um, the percussion ensemble was a good pilot program. Some pilot programs work, some don't. The music program says that there's no longer interest. Our goal in doing that was to kind of, uh, show respect for drummers and percussionists, but in the process, that one year we ran it, it was very small. Um, and the, the feedback from students was they felt And the, the feedback from students was they felt less part of the orchestra and band, the, the opposite of what we were going to go for. So and adolescent development is a course that hasn't run in probably 11 or 12 years. And we have built so many of the SEL skills into our wellness program, into our health program and into our general curriculum. So, and, and the course we're excited about is, is a course, I want to give the social studies department credit. I want to give Heather Pollard credit for, for the legwork on this, but contemporary issues in a diverse America. And as you see, it, it's an elective, a social studies elective that would follow the study of US history, you know, that our US history focus is in US history too, in 11th grade, among other things, research. Is the civics action project, which we'd like to bring some examples back to you later in the spring. That work is going on now and this would be a, a great opportunity for, for seniors to delve into this subject. We think it's going to be of interest. And it talks about contemporary issues and how they intersect with classism and racism and issues of gender and the environment, and then some issues that would be identified by students. So I, I appreciate Mrs. Pollard's legwork on this. We're excited about the verbiage changes, the updates and this opportunity. We had a lot of courses that we brought to you last year, I think 11 in all. Those, and those courses are booming and we hope that this new course is going to be exciting to our seniors. And I would anticipate that a year from now, we'll probably bring back another elective or two, either in English or social studies also to continue this work. So we asked for your support. I'm happy to answer any questions and we ask for your, uh, your approval if you, if you, uh, if you agree that these are good opportunities for students.
Thank you, Tom. First thing I'd like to say, the, the most valuable, valuable thing I kept hearing you say is we heard from the students. We heard from the students, we heard from the students. I think that's the most important thing. You're listening to what they're talking about, what they're, why they like a certain class or not like another one. And I appreciate that. I think that's, that's brilliant. Thank you. Bronwyn, I saw your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Tom. This is all super helpful and easy to read. For the 11th to 12th grade wellness change, could you just elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. So we just want to make sure that we want those, we want to make sure that those back forms between courses and year-long courses. Students still have to take a year of wellness. Used to be formerly called PE with wellness now because so many health aspects are, are embedded into it. But we want to make sure that a student, let's say a student takes wellness semester one A block and then second semester A block, there's an interesting half year elective that they want to take. We want to give them the flexibility to get out of that, take their wellness class a different block. So to, to make sure that it's semesterized will give them more agility and more, more movement, more freedom.
Okay. I think that's super helpful. Um, can I just ask one more thing, Ryan? Okay. I was just wondering, um, I know you guys added the honors physics course last year. And I'm just wondering if in the future, um, so a lot of the students, ninth and 10th graders might take five or so honors classes and that for two years in a row. And then when they get to junior year, that, that's no longer there. So they only, they have to choose between AP and college prep. I was just wondering if maybe you guys could take a deeper dive into the maybe adding some of those honors courses. Like you did for physics last year.
Right. I remember that, I remember we chatted about that last year and we, we did add that. I, I would also say, even though, even though at LHS, in many cases, it's a, it's a 10th grade class. Remember you don't have, you don't have to take science courses or any courses. Or I should say most courses except English and, and history, you don't have to take our science courses necessarily in order. But we do have an honors and an AP offering for biology and honors and an AP offering for chemistry. And then last year we added, we added it for, for physics. But you're right, Bronwyn, in, in terms of English and history, once they hit the junior year, you're right, we do kind of, the AP is that honors. We can take a look at it. We, we did have a challenge in terms of the number of preps because teachers in the English department last year, when we looked at that, that was a challenge, but happy to, Marty and I were chatting about that, you know, within the last few weeks. I'm happy to always have that dialogue and, and look at, uh, look at best practices. You know, we were able to run, I didn't know if, I didn't know if we were going to have enough interest to run both the honors physics and the AP physics this year, but we did. And we had the, and we had that capacity within teacher schedules and science to do it. And it's worked out. And I think we're going to see them both run again this year. We don't, it'll, it'll all be based on signups, but I, there's no reason to think that there won't be that, you know, uh, uh, enough where they can both live side by side again. So we'll always look at that. It is, you know, and when there are challenges and, and in terms of preps or opportunities or, or numbers of sections, I'll bring that forward to, to, to Marty, but I'm, I'm happy to keep that conversation going.
Okay. I appreciate that. I think it's just helpful if the students have that choice, if they've been doing that for two years and maybe they don't feel ready for AP. Uh, and maybe they feel comfortable writing the honors, um, just to be able to have that extra option. I mean, it might require an extra prep or changes or things like that, but in the interest of the students, I see it as a, a win for them.
Yeah. And if, you know, we, like I, like we did in physics, if we didn't have interest in one of the sections, we simply wouldn't run it.
Right.
If there were only five or six kids who wanted to take the AP and the other kids, you know, the majority signed up for the honors, we'd do that, that, that year. So um, we're happy to keep that dialogue going, you know, and, and again, I don't want to jump ahead of it, but we're also happy to have the dialogue as we continue to look, you know, there are also arguments to replace some AP courses with honors courses. Even if, if you can't do both, maybe where you can do both, do both. And if you can't, maybe have the dialogue about turning it into an honors. For all the reasons this committee has talked about in the past, for all the reasons about not being, you know, beholden to that test. Not that I'm not a believer in the college board and, and the role of AP. I am. I think it's, I value it and, and, and LHS values it, but I think we've talked honestly before that we're, we kind of, we're imbalanced in some of the, the number of AP courses we have, but happy to keep that conversation going.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Suzy?
Yeah, thank you. And, um, Tom, I appreciate that sentiment. I think anyone who follows, you know, education right now knows that the college board is, is definitely shifting in terms of their priorities and, and everything that's been happening with the pandemic and the global response to, you know, um, remote learning, distance learning and, and and frankly, some of the challenges that have occurred with the AP program, especially the AP testing program due to the pandemic. So I appreciate that, that sentiment and that that willingness to, to look outside. I also, um, in our, in our subcommittee meeting, you had mentioned, we had talked about the intro to engineering course that started last year and, and the potential of, of moving that into, you know, an honors option. And, you know, I just, um, you know, in that conversation, we sort of talked about, are there ways to build in honors options without having to, you know, make a class out of it, right? Like that there's, there's an honors pathway within a class or there's, you know, ways that student, that we can differentiate within a class versus it having to be a second prep and, and things like that. So this, so the structures are not so rigid that, you know, students have to be in separate rooms, but that learning can take place in different pathways could be achieved in the same classroom. I'm just, just throwing it out there as, you know, ways that we can think differently about how we, how we provide those offerings.
Yeah, we, we're, we're doing that and we tried that as you, as you know, in, in, um, in music and in the last two years and it's, it's a pilot and it seems to be working. It's unique. I mean, I want to be upfront. It's considered different preps by teachers and the, um, you know, the ELEA reminds me of that. Um, and as they, as they should, as is their role.
Understood.
As is their role. Um, but, uh, but absolutely. I think that, you know, we, that course, by the way, the intro to engineering is an amazing course. I think we talked a little bit about it. I, I think, I think a student or two or a student group or two hopefully can join the committee in late February or March, just to share. Cause I, I think they're excited about doing that. They just had some final projects, but you're right. We just had an AP environmental class last year. We, why do you have to take an AP just to have an environmental science course? So that's why we added that and they're both booming. We could, you know, we could talk about swinging that up to, to an honors level as well, but I agree. Um, we were excited about the, you know, in all we had, you know, three to four major changes in science and, and, uh, this was obviously a crazy year. We're excited to bring the course that we brought forward, but I think you're going to continue to see electives. And I think you'll continue to see the dialogue about various opportunities for students, various levels. And also, you know, discussion about making, maybe peeling back and making an honors level course internally that's, that allows students to go a little bit more deeply in, in lieu of an AP offering in a given subject while we, while, while we'll still have numerous offerings for students who want to, want to pursue an AP curriculum, which has, which has value.
And Marty has a question. I did have just one quick comment. And I am really excited about the, um, the new class and the, and the focus on anti-racism, you know, being deliberately, you know, included in the curriculum, especially in the language changes that you made. You know, clearly from the, from the experience that, and that very horrific experience that one of our public groups had to endure this, this past week. I, I feel for them very strongly, but it, it clearly demonstrates that we have so much more work to do around eradicating racism and promoting racial justice. And it starts in, in our schools. So I, I thank you for the efforts. Sincerely towards doing that. And I'm appreciative of all we've been seeing in terms of the curriculum experiences of our, of our students, especially as February has, has come, but also over the year as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Marty, you had a question or something to add? You're on mute.
Thank you. Uh, I was going to suggest we could, we could bring the, some of the questions here back to curriculum sub and curriculum sub could develop some recommendations and bring those recommendations to the full committee for whatever direction you wanted to go, wanted us to go. And, and I think that, that way we can, you know, kind of be very purposeful in responding to the direction that you have for us and you know, and, and again, I, I think Suzy took some of the words out of my mouth, which was a, a lot of what we try to do is be responsive to the goals that the committee sets. And, and if the, if the curriculum sub develops some specific goals for us relative to that ed ops book, we'll, we'll, we certainly can pursue those and please that, as Suzy said, the, the coursework that, that came forward is really reflective of, of the goals that we've talked about since, since the summertime. So yeah, I think, I think bringing, I think Tom and I are eager to have the conversation as well and, and kind of working through curriculum sub and then back to the full committee, I think would be, would be a great move.
Great. Thank you. If there are no more questions, there's a possible motion? Somebody not from curriculum sub, maybe?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go. Just hold, hold on just a second. Where are we here? I move on the recommendation of the curriculum subcommittee that the school committee approve the revisions to the Long Meadow Educational Opportunities booklet for the 2021, 2022 school year as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Gianna?
Is that me, Ryan?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. You broke up a little bit. Uh, yes.
Thank you. Kevin?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Suzy?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the change is passed seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Landers.
So much. We appreciate.
Next on our agenda is a super.
Uh, you've heard a lot from me tonight. I'll, I'll keep it brief. Uh, in your packet was a outline of the search process for identifying and hiring the next principal at Wolf Swamp. And I would be appreciative if, uh, I could have one committee member on that screening committee. So if someone, anyone who's interested, if you want to reach out to Diane and I, and if, if there's more than one of you interested, we can, we can figure out a process to identify the uh, a, a committee member to join if, if it is of interest.
Great. Thank you. So everyone, if you're interested, let Diane know. Uh, next up is the committee chair report, and I'm ac, I'm actually going to repeat things that have already been said tonight. First, it's a community effort that will control COVID and allow us to get kids into schools. As Marty was pointing out with the contact tracing stuff earlier. We can't send sick kids to school because if you do, then their classmates and their teachers become contacts and that causes us all problems. So as a community, we need to be paying attention to that in order for us to get more kids into schools. And secondly, as Suzy was just pointing out, uh, the event that happened last week at one of our other, one of our other town meetings where there was a hate speech incident is exactly why anti-racism is one of our goals as a committee. And those goals lead to actions by our school department. So excellent example of that tonight from, uh, Mr. Landers and the high school with their new class, uh, as well as the actions that we've, we've had expressed to us from the principals in previous meetings. They've pointed out many things that they're trying to do to educate racism out of our schools and out of our town. So people that want to do that kind of stuff, you're not welcome. And we're trying to teach the kids to not be like you. And, uh, so I appreciate the efforts of everybody in our schools because that, as Suzy just pointed out, that is where it starts. So we need to be doing this first so that people like that aren't here anymore. So thank you guys for that. Student rep report, Maxim. You're on mute. Go ahead, buddy. Sorry, Maxim.
There I am.
There you go.
Sorry.
Sorry, I forgot the new setup, Diane. My fault.
All right. So I just have one, uh, or two club, uh, club reports. Uh, we'll have more of that, uh, next time we meet with the whole SCAC. Uh, so the Red Cost Club is starting a COVID awareness project this month where the club members create a digital poster covering a certain aspect of the virus. Symptoms, vaccination, frequently asked questions of the vaccination process, uh, social distancing, plasma donation, et cetera. And, uh, they will present them to each other in a later meeting with further plans. And then as usual, I'd like to plug the Jet Jotter, which can be found online at thejetjotter.com. The team is working to keep students and residents informed on information surrounding the schools. For example, a story published last week about vaccinations included a few quotes from Chief Dearborn, for example. On Dr. O'Shea's, uh, and Mr. Landers news that some seniors could see return to four days of in-school learning. I actually just happened to post that news on my social media about like 30 minutes ago when it was announced. And I've already had numerous excited responses to that news. Uh, and I'll include myself to that group of excited students, um, excited seniors. Also, given the snow that I just shoveled two hours ago, I would be remiss not to mention the anecdotal student response to remote days that I've been receiving. Students, mostly seniors, but from a few grade levels reached out to me to express some displeasure with their remote days on what would previously be snow days. Most of the students that reached out acknowledged that while they would eventually have to make up the day, they enjoyed the surprise of having a day off, that a regular scheduled day off wouldn't afford them. That said, I was here when the vote was taken and students understand the thought and consideration that went into this decision from administrators and school committee members. Uh, it's also important to mention that I'm likely witnessing some amount of non-response bias, given that people happy with the decision are unlikely to reach out and tell me how much they like the decision. As opposed to students that will complain. Uh, regardless, I'd be remiss not to mention it, given the students that did reach out. And that's all. Thank you.
Your understanding of surveys, Maxim, never ceases to amaze me. I appreciate it.
AP statistics. Lovely AP courses.
There you go. Credit to the teachers at LHS. And just for those over 18 looking to vote, Mrs. Alan Tuck voted in favor of snow days, so make sure they never. Uh, do we have any of the other reports? Uh, do we have any of the other reports? Kevin, you have one?
Yeah, just, just.
Our Tesla program, is that what we have announced?
Briefly from Energy and Sustainability, we're working on putting together a townwide Earth Day cleanup. Uh, that's going to happen in April and I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, and I'll have more details as that, um, program develops more.
Awesome. Jamie? Nothing? And do we have anything from LPV C Bronwyn? No. All right, great. Thank you. On the my agenda that I have here, I see no report from Finance Sub. Is that correct? Thank you, Tom. Policy Sub, however, do we have a report?
I can, uh, I can take that if it's, um, if it's agreeable. Uh, there's a couple of policies that are in your meeting packet, uh, as first reading. And one relates to a new sexual harassment policy and then separately just a, a more general harassment policy. Uh, that sexual harassment policy was recommended to us by our attorney and comes in response to some new, uh, timeline guidance. And the, uh, Policy Subcommittee, uh, made some important amendments to that to, to tighten up the language and and make it clear and more comprehensive. And so they're there for first reading. They'll be posted for a public comment and we will bring that back to you after the public comment period expires.
Thank you. Curriculum Sub? And we already heard about your meeting. So is there anything more? That's it? Great. And Eval Sub, no report, correct Bronwyn? Fantastic. Ongoing business, FY22 School Department Budget.
So if I could, uh, you, we've had, um, an opportunity to make a recommendation to the committee for FY22. And additionally, we had a public hearing on February 2nd. And so, uh, tonight is the committee's opportunity to uh, have a final discussion and potentially a vote on the FY22 recommended budget. Uh, I would say that, um, rather than sort of being the, the end of the budget road, this is, we're really still at the beginning of the budget road. Uh, you know, we, we would need to submit the, uh, the school committee approved budget for the town. The town is still working to identify, uh, what their costs will be next year and what they're anticipating for, for state aid and local revenue. And so, um, we, we provide to the town a, a major piece of the, the budget puzzle and, you know, we need to continue to work with them to understand how that, that piece that we have shaped potentially fits into the, into the wider, uh, town budget. And so, and then additionally, to, to reiterate that, um, you know, with the application of stimulus, the anticipated application of federal stimulus funds, we will have an opportunity to to further shape the budget picture, uh, next year and further support students, particularly the needs that develop in the wake of this pandemic. So for your consideration is the FY22, uh, recommended budget. And there is a potential motion, a possible motion in your invited agenda.
Thank you. Um, in the interest of process, if there's anybody interested in making the motion, we can make the motion and then have a discussion afterwards.
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead, Suzie.
I move that the school committee approve the FY2022 proposed school department budget in the amount of $38,957,781.21 with a general fund allocation of $36,517,421.21 and submit this amount to the town manager for inclusion at the annual town meeting on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now for any discussion? We've had a few presentations on the budget. I don't know if anybody else, any further questions or further statements they would like to make. I see Gianna's hand first.
Thanks, Ryan. Yeah, it's just, uh, again, I know we've all said it, but, um, to Tom and to everybody and, and our finance sub, just thank you, you know, the, the presentations, the answering the questions and the, you know, taking the phone calls and, and, um, you know, the discussion, the opportunity for the discussion. Y'all are, you know, greatly appreciated.
Well, so Gianna, thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no other comments, I will call for a vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion passes seven zero. And again, thank you, Tom and Marty for all those presentations. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item of business is a letter to the governor. Marty, I think at this point, we're probably going to need a, a screen share on this so people can, the public as well as everybody present are looking at the same thing at the same time. Our colleague, Dr. Shea, drafted a letter for the school committee to possibly send to Governor Baker, copying the Select Board Representative Brian Ash and Senator Eric Lesser, urging the governor to prioritize teachers to receive the COVID vaccination.
And, uh, Kevin, is there a preference on, uh, the version that I pull up initially?
Uh, I mean, the, the version that probably people are going to like more is the version two that I put a little more thought into. So, um, I would start there. If we can agree on that, then we can dispense with version one.
Thank you. Put a lot of thought into everything, Kevin. Don't sell yourself short. But for brevity's sake, let's see draft two.
Okay, just give me one second here. Size of that, okay? Should I do like the?
Uh, larger, please.
How's that?
Thank you. And if you just put it in the middle, just for the sake of the record, I'll, I'll read it. If we can just have it up in the middle. Look, Kevin, here's the author. Do you want to read it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Dear Governor Baker, as members of the Long Meadow School Committee, we are writing to urge you to prioritize pre-K to 12 teachers across the state for vaccination. You have stated your desire for students to return to in-person learning and we completely agree with this goal. As a community, we have worked consistently to bring kids back to classrooms following accepted safety guidelines, masking, six-foot social distance, et cetera. We currently have our pre-K to four grades back in person and I probably, I revise that, that should say pre-K to three because I know the four isn't back, but whatever, we can figure that out. Back in person, four days per week, and our other grades, two days per week on a hybrid schedule. We would love to get all of our students back in person. However, it is presently very difficult to do that while keeping students and educators safe. Vaccinating teachers is one important strategy to help solve this problem. We understand the challenges associated with prioritizing vaccine distribution. We also know the burden the pandemic has placed on children, working families, teachers and school districts. The vaccine is a critical part of easing this burden and will help us to get kids back where they need to be in the classroom. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Kevin. Committee members, any thoughts? Comments, questions, any thoughts to share? Gianna, I see your hand.
Thanks, Ryan. Kevin, thanks so much for taking the initiative. I, um, you know, as an educator, you know, I appreciate the, the intent of using this as a way to, you know, trying every angle we can, uh, you know, try to, to get as many kids back into, um, the schools in person. I'm just thinking back to what Jamie had said about all of different variables and the kind of the different messaging and, and steps that have gone into planning and then to what you and Suzie had said about Suffolk, Suffolk having been five days in person without the vaccine. So I, I appreciate the intent. I love the intent. Um, but I'm just worried about kind of again, the, the mixed messaging. Um, we also learned tonight that there's no in-school transmission and I, you know, I, I worry about kind of hanging our hat on vaccines and then if, especially if he says, well, no, and then like, you know, is this kind of, you know, I guess I just kind of worry about the, the messaging of this in terms of again, like what Jamie was saying about the different variables. And, you know, the no in-school transmission and then the Suffolk. You, you know, I defer to you all, you know, you are experts, but, um, if you do go ahead with it, then I would just ask, you know, if that teachers could be changed to educators. And that words like however, and, you know, um, words that make it seem like going back hinges on vaccines kind of be changed, if, if that makes sense.
So can I, can I point something out just for, thank you, Gianna. That's, those are great points and, and including educators over necessarily just teachers, I think is a valuable point because we do have a lot of staff in the buildings that don't necessarily fall under the title of teacher. So that's a great point. If you look at the last line of the first paragraph, vaccinating teachers, or in this case, it will be educators, is one important strategy to help solve this problem. I don't think that this letter is stating that it is the only or the ultimate, or the only thing that is necessary in order for us to make a new decision. But as we discussed earlier with the chief, I forget, pardon me, I, I don't know if it was Jamie, I forget who asked him. Maybe it was Kevin. Was it you, Kevin? Who asked the chief what we can do to help push the governor into getting us more vaccines and getting them to where we need them. So this is possibly one attempt on our part. Seeing as schools are, are, um, area to get those vaccines where we need them, which is within, uh, with our school staff. But I, I think that last line there in the first paragraph mitigates the idea that this is the only strategy or an only necessary strategy in order for us to change our current situation. Just my opinion.
Yeah. And thanks for that, Ryan. And I guess what I would point out is the sentence before that. And again, this is coming down to, and I, I know Kevin, you know, you're so awesome about, you know, appreciating feedback from people. So, um, you know, I'm, I feel totally comfortable, you know, offering these suggestions. But Ryan, the sentence before that, I think it's the however, um, those kinds of words and those kinds of phrasing just make me a little nervous that somebody's going to be thinking like, you know, and then it says, however, it is presently very difficult to do that while keeping students and educators safe. We just learned again that Suffolk has been doing it without the vaccine. So.
Yeah, uh, Gianna, but I'm willing to bet, and I wrote down notes to myself that I need to contact them. But it's probably difficult. They are, but it's difficult. So I, I think all our thing is saying here is that it's difficult, Governor. Help us out. Put your money where your mouth is. And in this case, your mouth is, I want schools happening full speed. Okay. Prove it by giving vaccines to teachers or educators, teachers, parents, clerks, everybody who works with kids. You know, prove that that's what you want. And I, and I would, I would suggest that these school districts that are currently doing it at a closer distance are doing it very difficultly and they're working very hard to make it happen. So again, we don't have to, we don't need a seven zero vote. This isn't necessarily something everybody has to agree with. As, as has been pointed out multiple times, we have, um, respectful disagreements on this committee and we can do it again. I will just point out that I, um, I don't think that this necessarily is saying that vaccines are a decision maker for us, but we want the governor to send them. And anything we can do to get more sent, I think is valuable.
And, and thanks for that, Ryan. And, and, you know, and it, it may seem, you know, and, and I don't want to be like nitpicky and it, it may seem like a small thing to some people, but you know, even if we just had, we would love to get all of our students back in person, period. It is presently very difficult to do that. Okay. You know, I'm just, I, it's just the contingency wording.
Fair enough. That would, that wouldn't offend me at all. Fair enough. That's a good point. Jamie, I see your hand.
Yep. Um, and, and ju, just to clarify my point, um, what I was saying earlier on the vaccinations is, yeah, some of the wording in here, I don't agree, but overall the philosophy of what we're saying to the governor is get your butt moving here. Because, you know, we're falling behind and this is a, you know, a great thing. If we had them all right now, it would help make this, you know, a little bit easier. I, I don't have any issue with sending this. What I was saying earlier about vaccines is let's not say, hey, we're going to have vaccines before we're getting any more kids in school. We got to kind of caution that a little bit because it's not what we've been saying. And that's what I was trying to get across earlier. It wasn't, you know, I, I like the, the fact that we could get everybody vaccinated tomorrow. I think we're all on board on that. I just didn't want it to be a kind of an all or nothing that, you know, if every teacher and every staff member isn't vaccinated, we're not going back in the schools, you know, any more than what we are, uh, is what I was saying. I think, I think this is great. I, I truly appreciate what Kevin did. I, I don't have any real issue with this at all. It's basically just saying kind of get moving, guys, because this would really help us out and make our jobs a little bit easier. The only issue I have with this is if, uh, there, there's an N in my name. You could throw an N in there, uh, H E N S C H. Um, I'm all set after that.
Spelling matters. Thank you, Jamie.
Sorry, Jamie.
Bronwyn, Nicole, Suzie? Anybody have a question or a comment? Nicole, go ahead.
I just wanted to, um, thank Kevin for taking the time to put this together. I really appreciate it. It is a really important message to get out there to the governor. And as you said, um, Brian, the putting your money where your mouth is. This is one of the most important things our society can be focused on right now is getting more of our students back in person. And a big part of that strategy is getting people vaccinated. And also to thank, um, Gianna for pointing out the, um, switch to educators. Um, so I would also love to see that added in there to make sure that we're including all educators there as well. Thank you for your time on that though, Kevin.
I would also, uh, thank you, Nicole. And maybe Marty or whoever is currently.
That's me.
Kevin, you're doing that?
I'm trying to annotate just to highlight the stuff that we talked about.
Fantastic. Um, and possibly, um, school staff? Maybe? On behalf of my clerks who I know work very hard and are constantly in physical contact within as close as you can get with the public. So school staff, um, yeah, we have a lot of people who will be in contact with kids, with each other. Yes, custodians are included in school staff. So I'm talking about all those folks. So maybe we can change it to school staff. Rather than have a list, educators, clerks, custodians, if we just go to school staff. Pre-K to 12 school staff. And I have another question. Does anybody have an objection to, um, crossing out the part after however, as was pointed out, uh, by Gianna? I don't think it takes away from the point of the letter. And which is, as, as has been pointed out, Governor. Let's go.
Ryan, it can, it can stay. It's just now it's its own standalone sentence. Sorry if I didn't clarify that.
Okay.
It's just that taking away the however was the important part.
I hear you. Okay. Thank you.
And Ryan, I'm, I know you can't say me.
Go ahead.
Yeah. And I, I think it's important to point out that this is a letter of advocacy regarding, you know, what we want the governor to do. It does not in any way, shape or form reflect a policy decision on our part. So I just wanted to go on record saying that this does not reflect our policy stance. It is just a letter of advocacy to the governor.
Yeah. And I think as pointed out in that last line there in the first paragraph, it is an important strategy and it's one we want to have happen. Uh, I mean, as, as the chief said, he could do us all in two weeks if he had enough vaccines. So let's get the, and I think all the national reports are that Massachusetts is not doing very well on vaccine distribution. So this is our, we're a small school committee, but this is our little kick in the pants towards our state government. So do we need, Diane, can you help me out? Do we need to vote on this or is this more of a, uh, a consensus to send this letter as edited with me signing it?
I would think that you would want to vote on it and then just a vote to, um, allow you to sign it on their behalf.
So yes, we're going to have a vote?
I believe you should.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion on this?
I move that the school committee approve the letter composed to Governor Baker by Dr. Shea and that the chair is. The chair is authorized to sign it.
Sir, second.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Ryan?
Yes, Gianna.
Yeah, I just also, I just wanted to thank Kevin again, and also thanks Suzie for pointing out that. The policy, you know, the difference between the policy and the, you know, I'm a visual learner and I'm a, I'm a word, word person, so black and white to me. So thank you for that, Suzie, because that's important for me, anyway.
That, that's how I thought I, I could capture the concern, yeah.
Any other discussion?
Can, can we just, Suzie, can we just revise your motion to say as amended?
I, well, we didn't, we didn't have a motion to approve it originally in its original form, so. I don't, I didn't think that was necessary, okay.
The edited, the edited version is as written.
Got it, okay.
Right.
And, and Diane, do you have all those things down, or do you, do I need to do that?
No, I have it, and I have the word version up, and I was editing it as you were.
Beautiful, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, now I can see everybody. Seeing none, I will call for a vote, Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Yes, the motion, and yes for me, the motion passes seven zero. Our next item is the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school calendar. The calendar committee met on February third, twenty twenty one, and recommended the enclosed draft calendar for the twenty one, twenty two school year. If the school committee has any feedback or recommendations for change, the rest, those recommendations must be referred back to the calendar committee. And the, who's Marty, you presenting this for?
Yep, I got you, so I've projected the draft. Twenty one, twenty two school year calendar, which was put together. Using the process outlined in the. Year day contract, obviously includes, it designates the hundred and eighty school days, the. Five professional development days, and. It has the first day of school being August thirtieth. And the final day of school being August sixteenth. With notation on the, on the sort of five days that we set aside as. Snow makeup days, we don't know. Next year, if we will be able to designate snow days as remote learning days, and that's a decision that. If we do have that opportunity, I would bring it back to the school committee at some point, but we simply don't know that. Yet, so anyways, this is for your consideration, the twenty one, twenty two school year calendar, it includes. The annotation on the vacation periods, the PD days, the conference days as well. All in accordance with the requirements of the contract. Happy to answer any questions. Or bring any feedback back to the calendar committee if necessary.
Have a question, are we sure that all the holidays are correct?
Diane is, is thorough and accurate with that, and it has been double checked, so.
Thank you, Jamie.
Did you call me, was that Jamie?
Yeah.
Sorry, thought I missed her, um, I, I, I guess I, you know, the one thing I would throw, throw out there to the group that I think. We, we should at least visit, because I know a few towns around here have made changes, there's the February break. You know, should, should it be a week, do, do we really need a February break in there? Versus, you know, finishing the school year, you know, maybe a little bit earlier. I obviously would be in favor of that, that's why I brought up.
The presently, the, the contract. Dictates placement of the February break and the April break, so if that is something that. That's a direction that many would like to go, that's something we would need to engage the LEA.
Ryan?
Yeah? Jamie, do you have another question as a follow up, or can I move on to the next person?
Oh, no, go for it.
Suzie?
Yeah, I, I would agree. Again, you know, my experience is in Connecticut, so I'm, I'm biased and I'm coming in saying that, but. The majority of districts in February have moved to. Minimal. Time out during that February week, the week of President's Day. They, they might take off, you know, President's Day and another day, two days. But they're in for the rest of the week, and I see that being a trend. Especially given the fact that, you know, we've come back to school after a winter break. At the beginning of January, and then six weeks later, we're out again, so. I would be in favor of. Researching that and working with the LEA on. An agreement to. Possibly shorten February break.
Thank you, are there any questions about this calendar? And I can't see everybody, so give me a second to click, I don't see Bronwyn, Kevin, or Gianna, now I see. Anybody else have a question, unmute yourself and let me know. If not, there's a possible motion. And it, just again, to reiterate, it's only this calendar.
I move on the recommendation of the calendar committee and the superintendent that the school committee approve. The twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two calendar as presented.
Sir, second? Is there any more discussion on this calendar?
Yeah, I just have a question just on procedure, we're saying, we're saying we're gonna go back and. Not look at that date, or we're, we're saying we're gonna alter that after the, after the fact. After discussion. I wasn't quite following.
In order to, I think Marty's point was in order to adjust that part of the calendar, which involved negotiating with the union. Correct, Marty?
Correct, so I, I don't know if the, if the committee is thinking about that for the twenty one, twenty two school year, or. For. Future calendars, so.
So even, even if it was for this one. We can then vote for a different calendar, at a later date, if it were to be?
You could. I suppose, ask us to bring it back to the calendar committee. For consideration of. Of revising the February break. But we'd run into the obstacle of our agreement with the LEA, so we would. Need to, the first thing I suppose that would need to happen is, in short order, we would need to. Pull together a negotiating team to see if we could reach an agreement on that. For the twenty one, twenty two school year. The. The. The hope is always every year that we, we establish the. Coming school year calendar by March first of the preceding year, I know Diane has gotten. Several questions from. Community members wondering what, you know, where, when the vacation will be next year. So I would say we, we, we can't lose any time on that, we would need to, you know, you, you'd need to. We'd need to sit down formally to negotiate and try to reach an MOU. And then go to the calendar committee, I suppose. And then bring a calendar to the, to the full committee. I, I then, maybe Diane or others, if there's another pathway on this that I'm not thinking about.
No, I agree, the, it would have to first go to negotiations with the LEA. And then go back to calendar committee, and then come back to school committee, the issue is, is currently in their account, in the LEA's contract. There's a timeline, and so we have to bring. A calendar to you by March first, and hopefully it's approved by March first. So it would have to be negotiated.
I know, you know, one district locally that went down this road and, and. Modified that February vacation and, you know, with the eye towards getting rid of it, the challenge is. That this calendar is in sync with. Other calendars in, in Massachusetts at least, so I, I think we would, in addition to. Doing our legwork with the LEA, I would also want to do. Some outreach to the community to understand if, if that. It is something that would be, something our parents, our, our community members would be interested in, so I think we, we would have some. Work to do if that's, if that's a, an interest of the committee. Again, I, and I, I will tell you that as a teacher, I, I felt the same way, I always felt like, give me a, give me a March vacation and I'm good, but. I just, you know, the logistics of moving that. It, it will take, it will take considerable time, I'm not saying it's not a worthy goal. I just want to be. Sort of, you know, upfront about what we would need to. Do to achieve that, what would need to happen to achieve that.
Ryan, can I just add something?
Please.
I personally would want to make sure that. We were able to get feedback from parents before just. Completely taking this out. We also have a lot of teachers who have. That live near Long Metal. And their students go to other school districts. And that puts them in a position. Of not having the same vacation as their. Children, so I just want to make sure that before we do this, I would definitely want. As Marty mentioned, community feedback, I guess the only thing is, I don't know if we have time for that. Is, is it feasible if it's already February ninth, or?
I would, I agree with your sentiment on looking for community feedback, I think that's valuable, if we don't change the week, though. It doesn't actually impact someone who teaches in another district and has the same. Week off, all it really means is they would have. Two days home without their kids. Which they might not object to very much. Just throwing that out there, particularly after the pandemic.
Well, they're, if they're teaching in a district that has school vacation.
Right, and their kids go back to, and their kids go back to school instead of take vacation that week.
Who does that?
Well, if we're talking about doing that.
I thought Marty said only one other district he knows of.
Right, my point, my point, no, but if we don't change the week.
Yeah.
Change the number of days, as Suzie was saying. And kept the same week in February. The adults would be home and the kids would be in school, that's not a problem. The adults still need to be babysat by their fourth graders. It would be if we changed the week from what most people do, that's when you have your problem. You know what I'm saying, see what I'm saying, like if we put it as a week in March.
Because if our teachers go back on the twenty third. And their kids go to school in Agawam.
Okay.
And Agawam doesn't have school that week. They, they have the twenty third, twenty fourth, and twenty.
I see what you're saying, I was looking at it, I understand what you're saying, Bronwyn, thank you.
Just something to consider, I don't want to. You know, obviously it can be negotiated, but feedback to me before I voted on something as significant as this is definitely essential.
I agree with that, Bronwyn.
Ryan?
Anyone else have any other thoughts on this, Suzie?
Yeah, so I, I agree with that, I think we need to get input, you know, I, what, I, I guess my question is, how early would we have to? Get input if we don't do it for next year, what is the timeframe that we can, you know, do it for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three? Because, you know, at the last meeting, we talked about this February being, you know, kind of. All of a sudden it's come up and it was too late, now it's a year ahead and it's still too late, so I guess I'd like to know what the, what that process is. And then, so that's a question, and then. Bronwyn, just to, just to clarify, and you probably remember this. In, you know, people who work over the line in Connecticut. Had different April vacations and faced that same issue with their own children. When, when, because we did, had different vacations in, in Connecticut than the April week in Massachusetts, so it, it happens, I mean.
I do remember that, I, I do remember that, and I definitely disliked it.
Yeah, I did too. But it happens.
Thank you. So Suzie's question is an important one, what would be the process? If, if, as has been stated, the idea of getting community feedback and negotiating with the union is. Too short a timeframe for us to do this for this current calendar, what would be the process? For changing the next one so that we could get it started and not have this happen again?
Yeah, by all means, you could get it in place for twenty two, twenty three, we would. I think the steps we would need to take would be to. Work out the, the negotiable aspects of this. Get community feedback, and then. Once we have a handle on what is, what is negotiable possible, then, and, and based on community feedback, then we go back to the calendar committee. And bring the committee a, a calendar for twenty two, twenty three, that achieving it for twenty two, twenty three. Is. Is, is something that we can do, we have plenty of time to achieve it for twenty two, twenty three. I mean, frankly, if, you know, if you want to try to achieve it for twenty one, twenty two, we can do that as well, it's just. We would just need to, you know, kind of, again, engage parents, get some feedback, engage the LEA. Back to the calendar committee and, and bring a recommendation to.
I, I'm sorry, and I'm sorry to keep harping on this, but if, I, I guess my question is. You know, so it's, it's written somewhere that the, that the school committee has to have this approved by March first. But we're getting it, you know, so there really isn't, even though there's an offer of giving, us giving feedback. And, and potentially like making changes, you're essentially saying there's no time for us to do that. And so I, I guess that's what my question is, we really weren't given any lead time into this to say, hey, if you have any thoughts about this. We're in a time crunch, you know, tell us ahead of time, so that, that's why I'm pointing out that procedurally, we need, we maybe need to do something different, because. We may have, you know, some changes and adjustments, I mean, we're, we've just lived through, as you know, because you've been dealing with it more than we have. But we've been dealing with, through, through a pandemic where we've actually. Made multiple changes to this calendar in the current school year, so I, I guess what I'm saying is. It needs to be better articulated what the process is for the school committee to have input. And if the time crunch is the issue, then maybe we need a advanced notice of, like, if you're thinking of any changes, you know, can you, can you? Think about those ahead of time?
Yeah, the thought was that if the committee had some feedback, we would, we would bring it back to the calendar committee, and then we have a meeting on the twenty third, and, and. I'm sure there would be even leeway beyond that, you know, we could go into your, your March meeting, the, the March one, I, I. Not sure exactly how it's raised in the contract, but typically it's, you know, reasonable efforts to get it done by March first. And then, you're right, the, the, the calendar does get. Revoted, okay, based on circumstances that pop up, but the thought was that we wanted to get it to this meeting. If there was any adjustments. That didn't require negotiation, we could bring that back to you on the twenty third. So typically, it's, you know, could we look at, you know, starting on a different date, could we look at. Moving a in-service day, a professional development day, and so that, that, that typically, that can happen, and we have some time for that. To, we can, we have plenty of time to make adjustments based on the. Committee feedback, what would be more difficult would be to make adjustments that require negotiation. But we could do that as well, I mean, that's, you know, I, I would say, you know, we could. We could move as quickly as what we possibly can on it, if you, if you'd like a. You know, different option for twenty two, for the twenty one, twenty two school year, we can do that.
I'll point out that seeing as we vote for the calendar. We, as a committee, can bring up items anytime we want. So moving forward, just make a point of putting it on the agenda, and we're gonna talk about the calendar, we can do it in September if you want to. The, what is the general? What is the general feeling on the desire to send this back to the calendar committee to try to change this now? Or your interest pushing it to something that we do between now and this time next year? So that it goes into the future? Maybe it becomes part of our negotiations with the bargaining units, which is going to begin soon.
Can I ask a question?
You may, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, since this is currently part of the contract with the LEA, wouldn't a change to this contract, if we decided to move forward in that direction, would be a change in the contract? Would that typically be something that we would try to use an MOA for? Would that be something that is most likely to be a part of contract negotiations for future years? In which case, getting something approved quickly feels unlikely since there's a whole contract to work out.
The quicker route would be to work towards an MOA with the LEA the aspects that, you know, whatever the committee's goals are relative to the vacation period. So we could sit down with the LEA ASAP, see if there's any, if we can achieve an MOA to allow for revision to the February vacation schedule. And then at that point, we'd also gather input from the community and then go back to the calendar committee. I mean, I, if this is a, a goal that's important to the committee, we can, we can make it happen. We can move expeditions there on this.
Ryan. Jamie, go ahead.
Can I just, can I just say one thing? I was asking a simple question and I didn't think we'd current into this, to be honest with you. My, my feedback to the group, I personally don't want Marty or any of the administrators not working on anything that isn't about getting our kids back at school or anti-racism. Right now, I know there's a lot of other things, but those are like the main things with getting everybody back in here. This was just a, kind of a simple question. I would prefer us to go to 22, 23 and let's work, work on it there. Learn about why this week is so important to the union and why it was put in there and find out if there's some sort of working solution that, you know, we can kind of talk through and figure out. I would prefer Marty and the admin not working on this over the next two. I wouldn't want them spending an hour of their time on this if it's really going to take that amount with the union and only worry about getting our kids back at school. So my two cents on it. I was just asking the question more around, it makes no sense to me. I don't get why it's there and just trying to understand it, just as a kind of an innocent bystander, having no clue why it's that way. So I would prefer us waiting till that following year, but truly making it part of the negotiations here to understand their side of what's important about this week. And then we could kind of talk through it at that point.
Thank you, Jamie. Any other comments? Did we, Diane, for the sake of process, did we do the motion and then start discussing or did we just start talking? I don't remember at this point.
I know, I have a motion and a second, so.
Fantastic. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Marty, can you stop sharing unless somebody needs to see the calendar? Hopefully Kevin's question does not need to see the calendar.
Yeah, no, no, just, just briefly, Jamie, thank you. Exactly my thinking, this is an important issue, but not right now. So we have higher priorities and I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? So there's a motion, I'll call a roll call vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the calendar passes 7-0. Now, our next item is another possible motion. Somebody wants to read that one for me?
I can take it, Ryan. I move the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with the units A, B, C, D, E, F, H, and Purpose 7, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session.
Again.
There's a second, any other discussion? Again, to reiterate, the motion is that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, H, and Purpose 7, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes, for me, we are going into executive session. Thank you.
I move that the school committee approve the memorandum of agreement between the Long Meadow School Committee and the Long Meadow Education Association Unit A regarding English sections at Long Meadow High School as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Kevin?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Brownman?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Tiana?
Yes.
And yes for me. That passes seven zero. Susie?
I move that the school committee approve the memorandum of understanding between the Long Meadow School Committee and the Long Meadow Education Association Units A, B, C, D, E, F, and H regarding additional COVID sick time as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Kevin?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Brownman?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Tiana?
Yes.
And yes for me. That passes seven zero. One more motion if anybody's interested.
I move that we adjourn the school committee meeting.
Is there a second?
I.
Any discussion? Call for a vote. Kevin?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes please.
Brownman?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Tiana?
Yes.
And yes for me. Seven zero, we adjourn. Thank you very much.